October 11th, work session meeting on the continuum of care. This is an update on our gap analysis report. And just a reminder for all of those present in the courtroom that we do not take public comment during our work sessions. We also do not make any, take any votes or make any actions on it. However, you are welcome to come to our 5:30 business meeting, and we do take general public comment at that time if you have things you'd like to address the commission about. So I will turn this over to Jill, and she will introduce our guests.
Thanks, Commissioners. I'm excited for today's presentation. Many of you know, I know everybody at this table knows that the county and the city have been engaged in development of a five-year Housing and Homelessness Strategic Plan with a group of collaborative stakeholders, two of whom you're going to hear from today, who are a member of one of the key organizations in our community that are helping respond to and craft a strategy to address housing and homelessness in our community. A key component of that strategic plan is systems. You're going to hear about what we know about our existing systems today. The systems that you're going to hear primarily about are systems that are in place in communities all across the country. Our best practices are recognized by the state and federal government and what we think are kind of the underpinnings of a high-functioning system of care to quickly address folks that are experiencing homelessness and get them into the housing resources they need. You need data, you need high-functioning systems to do that. So I think you're going to hear a little bit about what that looks like today and where our colleagues see room for improvement and what their role is in that and where they think this is going to take us in the future. So with that, I'm going to, we have, our two guests with us today are, Kristi McMurphy is the Executive Director of the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition. You're going to hear more about that organization and the role that they play, and they'll describe that to you. And then Shanae Eggerd is the Director of the Homeless Management Information System and the Coordinated Entry System for the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition and the Kansas Balance of State COC. They're going to jointly present today. And then we hope that we have plenty of time for some questions, conversations. I think there's going to be a lot of questions that inherent to this kind of information is, there's a lot of questions and seeking clarity because a lot of, a lot of the world that they live in is, it's the, it's the federal government and the way that they, they have to operate. So ask questions, seek understanding, and we hope that this just gives you all and members of the public that are listening a better understanding of what data we have access to us today, how we hope to have better and more data, and how these systems are committed to improving to serve our unhoused community. So with that, I'll hand it off to Kristi.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us today. I'm specific to work this here, this way. Yeah, this is me here somewhere. There I am. So I've been involved with homelessness field for 29 years. And I favorite work to them, 1998, KESKY. Snay has been in the field for 11 years. San, Jill says she's a Director of Homeless Management Information System. We call that HBS, HCMYH, and Coordinated Entry. That's who we are. So by those, we're a statewide organization. We're housed in Lawrence, but we serve the whole state. We have 10 staff. They're remote around the state working in home communities. A big part of our work is to coordinate the Balance of State COC. So, could aim here, that is, other one, most of rural counties, including Douglas County. And I'll talk about that in a minute. We are tasked with coordinating, coordinating the annual point-time homeless count. And they have, has inverted account, HIC. We have sought apply for the CS funds from HUD. It's a major process, takes a year to shoot it. Also, we coordinate regions. We have another one, one counties, divide them to nine regions. And this is for coordinate sake, so we do that. Snay is going to talk about her job as a coordinator of need and her HMS need. Her mission is to build candidates for safe, appropriate, affordable housing from, for goal Kansas with, not go state and civil partners. Our focus area is to educate, collaborate, and advocate. We have nothing trainings by Zoom for our members. Anyone, anyone can be a member. We do, we have a learning management system. We outdo annual summits as well. Actually, next, next year in 2024, we're holding an annual summit here in Lawrence, April 23rd and 24th. So you guys are all welcome to attend and maybe speak. And we, of course, collaborate with them, COC, and also advocate as well. I'm going to explain for you and other people what I could aim here is. There's, it stands for three things. It stands for a body of people working together to do homelessness. That is people like you, homeless service providers, education, corrections, healthcare, people that have experienced being homeless. All these people working together to end homelessness as a COC. It also means their area that COC serves. Now to go into that minute. It also means funding stream from HUD. So there's, you know, COC funds need here for people who are due. So means that three, three things. The Balance of State covers other one counties, excluding sunny, Johnson, and Wyandotte, and Settler County. So here's a map here. So you can see those one county COCs, Settler, sunny, and Johnson. Wyandotte in 2016, they worked with them, Missouri, KSC, Missouri, COC. So they're now, they're now a two-state, or two county bi-state COC. And the Balance of State is all these other, other one counties, including Douglas County. Douglas County used to be its own one county COC. And Lawrence, the city of Lawrence was the need for that COC. And the person who was in charge retired. And then when that person retired, they approached the Balance of State to absorb them. So we did, so you've been part of Balance of State, I think it was since 2007. So that's why there's one county in this region versus multiple counties like we just have. So I'm, I'm going to pass this over to Snay here. But I wanted to tell you guys, we're going to talk about the gaps analysis and what we do with it. When we are, we are required to do a gap analysis for HUD. HUD requires us to do one. We have to do a gap analysis or a needs assessment, something that tells the COC what is needed. And then, so we did, we do this every year. We make recommendations to the steer committee of the COC. And they agree or change or whatever. But those recommendations are used for the CSO, COC funding competition we do every year. And that tells us what we, we want people to apply for and where we want them to apply. So I want to bring your attention to number four. Because of the gaps analysis, we said that we want purpose for housing in the three regions, the Douglas County, the Settler, and the Hills regions. Because the gaps houses have approved that they need that. Unfortunately, no one applied for purpose for housing or any kind of housing from this, this recent competition was closed September 28th. We had two, there were ten for ministries, ten to apply, but they chose not to apply.
Can I ask, who is eligible to apply for those funds?
Nonprofits, state governments, government, city government, and nonprofits. Yeah. So, go ahead, Jill.
I just also wanted to highlight, I put it in the, in the memo as well, but I want to make sure just for folks that are listening that Douglas County has a funding agreement, an annual funding agreement also with the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition to add extra resources for the regional coordination role of the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition and the Balance of State. Because, so in a way, while we don't have our own COC anymore, we are doing the best we can to make sure we have the right resources concentrated for Douglas County without having a formal COC. And that person, her name is Kristin Egan, and she's here locally in town, and she's doing a tremendous job so far.
Yeah. So I'm best of effort to, Snay is to talk, so we'll talk about the contents of the gaps analysis.
Thank you, Kristi. All right. So before we begin reviewing the gaps analysis, I just want to, for everybody who's listening, go over some common statements. So coordinated entry, also known as CES. A coordinated entry system represents an approach to coordination and management of a continuum of cares housing crisis response system. CES enables each region to effectively and efficiently connect persons experiencing homelessness to available resources. So in other words, the coordinated entry system is focused on identifying those who are experiencing homelessness and then referring them to available resources. A part of that in areas like Douglas where the, those who are experiencing homelessness outweigh available resources, the coordinated entry system becomes a prioritization process through the coordinated entry lists. So the list in coordinated entry system is primarily focused when there's a scarcity, and there is in Douglas. So you may hear this list called the active list, master list, by-name list, community queue list. They all mean the same thing, and it's a list of those we've identified as people experiencing homelessness and are waiting to be referred to available resources. Homeless Management Information System, also known as HMIS, is a computerized data collection application that facilitates the collection of information on homeless individuals and families using homeless assistance service agencies and stores that data. However, the primary purpose of homeless, the HMIS system is to track the referrals from coordinated entry, the enrollment into housing programs, and the exits from housing programs. So this allows us to collect outcome-based information. So without that, we would not know how successful or unsuccessful our programs are. So utilizing coordinated HMIS is extremely important in order for us to let you guys know if the services and the programs that are being used in Douglas are successful or what areas might need to be improved. All right. So the number on the left, 351, is the point-in-time count. So the point-in-time count is done every January, and it is a count of persons who are unsheltered and sheltered. And so a lot of the agencies in Douglas, every January goes out on one night every year and assesses people who are experiencing homelessness to count them. And so this allows us to get a one-night count of how many people were experiencing homelessness in a sheltered or unsheltered environment. And then that number allows us to send that to HUD to let them know how much funding we should get. So this is extremely important, every region, to know how many people in at least one night. And this is people we've found. So we do anticipate that all point-in-time count numbers are higher because not everybody is found in that single night. The one over on the right is the annual CES list. So 346 is the amount of people who were added, households that were added to the CES list because they were seeking housing in Douglas. All right. So our available resources, so HUD requires that we report how many beds are available in each region. So in Douglas, during our HIC, which is Housing Inventory Count, we reported 216 beds in Douglas, emergency shelter beds, 109 rapid rehousing beds, 115 transitional housing beds, and 45 permanent supportive housing beds.
Can I pause you for a question?
Yes.
So I'm generally familiar, or I think I know generally, what the differences between those sort of definitions are based on working for one of our shelter and housing programs. But do you think you could give like a quick breakdown of sort of the key differences about how you all define or maybe is defined by the HIC report about the difference, distinctions between, for example, rapid rehousing beds and transitional housing beds, which is something that isn't super common for a lot of people?
Yeah. So emergency shelter beds are beds that are based in an emergency shelter for emergency services. Transitional housing beds are temporary beds. They're not actual leases. They're not rental assistance. They're not put into an apartment. Usually, they're housed in a facility-type situation. Rapid rehousing beds are beds or apartments units in which an agency provides rental assistance. So an agency will help that household with rent. And then permanent supportive housing is specific to those who are disabled. So those who are experiencing chronic homelessness, that means that they are, have been homeless for 12 months over a three-year period, and they have a disability.
And Shanae, that 216, that number reflects, because this is 2022 gap analysis, that 216 includes the winter emergency shelter beds, right?
Yes, it does.
That the city operated. And then on rapid rehousing, 2022 was a year that we actually had a whole lot more rapid rehousing COC grant. It's not going to look that way in 2023 because we don't, you'll hear this, but like, we don't have, nobody applied for rapid rehousing for 2023. So we don't have that available. So that number is going to change quite a bit. And then I think transitional housing, a lot of those, our programs run through the Housing Authority. Is that right, the transitional programs?
I would say majority of them are run through Burt Nash.
That's right. Sorry. Yeah.
Can I ask a question? Transitional housing, what's the general time length? Is that like a three to six month or is it two, two years?
Up to two years.
Okay. And are there time limits on the others? I know emergency sheltering often is nighttime only. Is there a length of time that that typically falls under that definition? Or?
Emergency shelters can go night by night or kind of like an all-day, a day shelter. There are different options there. Rapid rehousing is usually up to 24 months. However, they do like a three-month assessment sometimes to see if they still need the rent assistance or if they're ready to be out on their own.
And I'll just add with my service provider hat on that like the Lawrence Community Shelter and Willow Domestic Violence Shelter have 90-day emergency stay shelters, which is fairly common across different types of shelters. But I believe, aren't there HUD, again, or some sort of federal definition that sort of cuts off what can be considered emergency sheltering past a certain period, like six months or 180 days? Is that, maybe I have misinformation or I'm conflating some, some other piece of HUD guidelines, but I thought there was, just in terms of how some organizations and the services they provide can define themselves and therefore go after different funding streams best on, based on how they define themselves.
Off the top of my head, I don't believe HUD has extended, established a specific timeframe. Like says, after this amount, they're no longer considered homeless because they're in an emergency shelter situation. They do provide recommendations, like a 30-day evaluation, a 90-day evaluation, right? Because the goal is to use it. It is a, it's supposed to be a temporary solution. However, HUD is very clear that as long as they're living in the shelter, they remain homeless.
Got it. Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
And just dialing in that 216, is that only three entities? That's Willow, Lawrence Community Shelter, and at this time, the Winter Shelter? Or are there others?
Family Promise.
Family Promise, yes. All four of those.
So counts on emergency sheltering?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Next one. Okay. So the listed amounts of beds are beds with no available data. So I am unable to report on this amount of beds. They are not in our HMIS system. They might have their own internal data system, but they are not reporting it to us, like the usage. They are assisting us in the hit and pit, but not on a daily basis, not on a weekly or monthly basis. So we don't know the data, the performance, the outcomes for 128 emergency shelter beds, 107 transitional housing beds, and 45 permanent supportive housing beds.
So what entities are those?
So we do have it laid out. I didn't want to like write names and be like, it's this organization.
But I'm asking.
I do have it laid out in the actual plan. So if you go into the gaps analysis, you go down to the Douglas region section, and they are named.
Yeah. And I think it, could you, and I know I can describe, like, what are the reasons, the reasons why we haven't? There's a couple of reasons why they haven't, they aren't, that data is not there. One is just capacity of KSHC to provide the number of licenses to access the HMIS system. So KSHC is in the balance of state building capacity to just have more licenses to access the HMIS system. That's a huge barrier that they've worked really hard to try to broach. But there's also a, you know, just kind of a practice, a history in the community of, if I don't have to use HMIS, I'm not going to use HMIS. And for, and sometimes that's for good reason because it's been clunky, they haven't had access to it. But if you don't have to use it because your program isn't federally funded, why use it? So there's a couple of reasons, but I think we're trying to make progress. KSHC is working very hard to make all ways to participate possible. And it's a significant measure.
Wasn't there also at some time, if you weren't HUD-funded, you couldn't have access to it? Is that getting resolved?
That has been resolved.
Excellent.
We are currently onboarding interested agencies right now. So feel free, shoot me an email if anybody's listening to this that would like to join.
Thank you. It was a good advertising moment, and I'm glad for it.
Okay. So here is a very nice overlook of what our gaps analysis is. So they are persons count versus the resources in Douglas. So over on the left upper-hand corner, we have emergency shelter beds in the winter. So this does count the winter shelter beds that were reported when that was open. So comparing the pit count versus all of the emergency shelter beds, we had a 61% coverage rate. So as you could see from the red, that is our unmet need. So that is with all the beds in the system during the winter of our gap with emergency shelter beds. The one over there on the right is our emergency shelter beds without the winter shelter. So because that's not a yearly program, we wanted to see what the gap looked like without that. So the pit count versus the emergency shelter bed coverage is 37%. And the rest is our gap. The next one is our rapid rehousing coverage, pit count versus RRH bed coverage. We only have 31% covered. So that means out of the entire people, the amount of people we found in that one night, only 30% of resources could cover them with rent, help them get housed. So as you can see, that is a huge barrier into transitioning them from unsheltered status to housed status.
Can I ask, in the numbers that you're using here, do those include the ones that are not in the HMIS?
Yes.
Okay. So it's everything we've got?
It's everything we've got. Then the next one over is our permanent housing coverage. I do want to review again that permanent supportive housing is for individuals who are chronically homeless with a disability, have been homeless for 12 months over a three-year period. So those beds are specific for them. So this percentage here only counts the chronic homeless count versus the PSH bed coverage. So even though we have narrowed into just those who are chronically homeless, we have a 47% coverage rate, and the rest is unmet.
So in terms of permanent supportive housing in this context, we only, we need about 50 beds worth to finish that. We have 45 now, and we're almost 50% covered?
Yes.
Okay.
Sorry, I was like doing the math.
Yeah, sorry. Doing some math there. I'm just curious, because we have one project coming online from Burt Nash, I think it's 24 beds, and just trying to see what the extent of the gap might be.
Yeah. And that is, again, the individuals we found that one night, right? So it could be more than that that we need. I think the last time I talked to Kristin, the number of chronic in the strategic plan, Jill, feel free to correct me, is around 80. So that is about half of the numbers, yes. Okay. So we want to just emphasize again that there are available funding opportunities that are not being applied for, such as the continuum of care funding that we assist with. Continuum of care funding can, can provide rapid rehousing and permanent supportive housing here in Douglas. And so we just wanted to say that if you would like to know about grant opportunities, please feel free, send us an email, send Kristi an email, and we will assist any agency, technical assistance if they would like to know more about grants.
What kind of dollars are available through that grant?
Well, um, and it's a couple of, so HUD has a formula that they sign to each COC. And we apply up to that max amount. And then we can apply beyond that. So we, we try to max that out every year. The max of our, our COC was $5 million, I believe. Maybe I'm wrong there, but so I wouldn't have people buy big time, just try to.
And you said you had a couple of letters of intent from organizations? Were those Douglas County or other counties?
Yes.
But nobody followed through and worked with you for putting an application?
This year they did not.
Okay.
Jill did.
Ours was a renewal.
Renewal.
Yeah.
And hers was renewed, but no one knew, so.
And we were awarded one. I'm waiting for all my confirmation from HUD before I can put that in front of you formally for 2022. So yes, I did a renewal for ours, but no new applications from Douglas County, even though it was strongly encouraged. But we have, that is one of our strategies in our strategic plan. And it's something that we've asked Kristin to kind of like run point on in terms of like having relationships and having really intentional conversations with partners in the region. What projects do you have? How can KSHC support you? KSHC provides a ton of support in terms of technical assistance and making sure that agencies have all that they need to be ready to apply.
I don't know what other efforts we can put in, but it's critical that we pull those dollars down. We have such a need and not all of that can come straight out of our property tax dollars. Like this is an opportunity and let us know how we can be helpful to get that in front of partners and make sure that they're taking advantage of that. And that may be a little bit of carrot and a little bit of stick. We'll just see what's needed. Thank you.
Okay. So this slide right here is kind of where do we rank? Where does Douglas rank in the Kansas Balance Estate COC? So the Douglas County, out of 101 counties that we serve, 101 throughout the state from that map, the highest, we have the highest number of unsheltered persons reported during the pits, the highest number of sheltered persons reported during the pit, and the second highest number of households identified through coordinated entry system. This next one over here is Douglas region. So out of each of the regions, and remember Douglas is the only one that is one county. The other nine regions are multiple counties. Feel free to refer back to that map. So out of the nine regions, Douglas has the highest number of identified chronic households, the highest number of identified disabled households that are not chronic, and the highest number of identified single adult households.
So putting that up against some regions that don't have a lot of people in them. So how do we look at that per population? So I imagine we still rank fairly high, but maybe not quite as stark as what this is. So I'm just curious, kind of like per capita, what's, now you don't have to have those numbers in front of you, but I just, I don't want the take home messages to be that Douglas County is the worst. I mean, the comparison is not apples to apples by any means across those regions.
No. And so that's kind of why I did this next piece here. So the resources in Douglas compared to the other areas. So Douglas County, out of 101 counties, has the highest number of emergency shelter beds. So while there's still a need, right, that we just established, this county is doing the best county out of every county about emergency shelter beds. They have the highest number and especially during the winter, when there's the winter shelter. Douglas County has the highest number of transitional shelter beds. Douglas County has the third highest number of rapid rehousing beds. And Douglas County has the second highest number of permanent supportive housing beds out of the 101 counties.
And this can be a bit of a double edged sword because as we're talking, as I'm looking through like the other counties' data and they say they have zero unhoused population and there's the story, I don't know how much of that is factual and how much of that is story about people coming from other places to Douglas County because we have resources available. And that's something that is a very critical conversation in the community. So trying to figure out like, well, compared to our population versus other populations, like what's that percentage of resources that we have? And are we significantly higher per population than other places? And in the places that we are higher than, like, is there a draw in this direction? Or are there other resources that, or other ways of managing resources in other counties? Because they're so different across some of our more rural counties to someplace like Douglas County.
Yes, definitely. So one of the key factors that we need in order to answer those questions eventually is more data, right? So that's utilizing HMIS more, having all of the beds in HMIS, then we could be able to do that. We've also, with prompting from Douglas and Jill, we've also added some new elements to coordinate an entry so that next year at this time, I can report on different things. For instance, I can, I will be able to report next year on where their identified county or city was. So if they did come from a different city, then I'd be able to see that. At this moment in time, we don't, but you guys let us know some data elements that you wanted integrated and so we did. So next year, our gap analysis will be a lot more detailed.
So that, I mean, data is an ongoing process. When did that start being collected in terms of like a location of origin?
Yeah. So October 1st.
Okay.
Just a few days ago.
I know you've talked about, you know, this is the 101 counties, so the other four. How, sometimes we, you know, with two of them on either side and one up to the edge, how do we know how we compare against them?
That is a good question. I don't have those numbers. I do believe that every COC has to have their pit count and their hit count public. They're also downloadable from the HUD website. So if we wanted to go in there and do like a manual comparison, that's something that's possible.
Do they do gap analysis too?
They're supposed to, yes. It is a requirement.
So that may be something we can try to track down, see if they have.
Yeah, I had a similar question and, you know, to elaborate further, curious sort of what mechanism for communication or? What kind of communication or collaboration happens between the different COCs? And so, and to spell that out further for anybody who might be listening or who will listen later, you know, those counties or those other places that Sarah just referenced being, you know, I believe, well, I'll let you all list them exactly, but you know, we're in the 105 counties of Kansas. We're the sort of oddball fifth one where, thank you, are you going back to the map? Thank you. Where we, our population density is, you know, significantly different than those other 101 counties and then those four most populated counties. And so I think that's just, it's a relative thing and it makes me curious to see what, if communication or some sort of, sort of, analysis of different gap analysis that might happen across those COCs. Sorry, I'm losing all my acronyms. What that might tell us, how we compare to for more urban, more densely populated COCs. That was rambly, sorry.
That's a good question. We don't compare gap analysis at all. We're trying to establish a, get their data warehouse where all COCs can ship their data to a warehouse and then we can create reports within the entire state. That's a goal mine to do, but we're not there yet. The COCs, we do coordinate, we talk once a month or more, but the data itself is not, we don't compare it.
It's helpful to know that, because I wasn't really sure about that on a statewide level and it's, it is hard to compare sometimes and there's so many variables that are involved in that. And, you know, to put a point on that and sort of the different interpretations or narratives that can be taken away from some of those facts that you just went through and listed on that slide, are that there are a lot of different pressure points. And the city of Lawrence and Douglas County in its entirety has, you know, some of those pressure points being that our housing market is, looks significantly different than some of the other counties in our state, right? And so those pressures are significantly different. And we have a less than 1% vacancy rate on average. And so there's sort of a never ending supply of tenants in a town where people tend to like, they come here and they want to settle here and establish roots here. And it's a community that's growing. And so theoretically, there's growth opportunities for people and people follow opportunities and they resettle their families. But there's a variety of pressure points that make that become impossible for them and they are priced out of a community and still trying to stay here, right? There's just so many different elements that it's not as simple as because we built more services or add more beds, we're quote unquote attracting more people who are already homeless, right? Homelessness is a condition that is, but created by a whole multitude of circumstances and profound traumas in people's lives. So anyway, I just wanted to put a point on that, that there's lots of narratives that can be spoken about some of the data that we're talking about today. And there's layers to it that are unique to our county and we are a weird population size by comparison in this sort of between rural and urban space.
Commissioner Reed, to back up one of your assertions about just the challenges of our, of just our housing stock and our housing market, when we were first going, we were planning this conversation, when I was looking at one of the slides or one of the pages in the full report, it's where it shows all the counties' pit counts and the coordinated entry system. If you look at some of the more populated counties, like, and I keep looking at Crawford or even Leavenworth, you see a, you see a, the pit count number is lower than the CES number. In Douglas County, the pit number is higher, at least almost 100, 100 higher than the CES. So I think what we talked about and you, you all said was, could be accurate, was that we have more people, there are more people moving through the CES list in those other communities. And folk, and I observe it weekly when I, when I am able to listen in on coordinated entry, not as, there's not as much movement through our coordinated entry list because we don't have the resources, the federally funded resources and, and/or locally other funded resources to move folks into housing as quickly as perhaps these other communities are able to do. That's just one interpretation, but I think that sounds reasonable.
Yeah. I'd be curious, and this isn't data that I would expect from you, but kind of data that we can probably find from other sources, like in terms of counties where people are moving away from and moving to. I mean, I think Douglas County is a draw just across the state and across country internationally. Like people move to Douglas County in ways that they don't move to some of the other counties, rural counties in Kansas, and people instead moving out from there. So I think we have a population where, you know, who is from here is a more difficult question to answer than folks who have, you know, living in more rural area that have, you know, a multi generational kind of history in that place. It just looks different here.
I have one more question. I'm curious if you can help articulate, how do you all discuss or account for or think about sort of what is commonly called invisible homelessness, right? So people who are generally not going to be located and identified during a point in time count, for example. Perhaps they're showing up in, throughout the annual, you know, or this cyclical CES, the coordinated entry meetings, because they're working with a case manager at an organization who knows that they're sort of couch surfing, for example, or moving between campgrounds and, you know, state lakes and whatnot, things that are not always what people think of when we think about what, the visible homelessness and people living in shelter beds. I'm just curious, because I know there's some, well, I won't pretend to know actually much about like how federal and HUD definitions of that impact the ability to both collect or try and account for that data, but also match, you know, organizational capacity and funding for, to support that. And does that make sense? I just, if you can talk to me a little bit about, like, how do you all discuss that? Like the people that are, we know are out there and experiencing homelessness in these ways that are not clearly defined as quote unquote literally homeless?
I could speak to, we're working to do a study on youth homelessness, 16 to 24. That's our, you're using youth GAFs for, and we're trying to do that. Beyond that, we are kind of stuck with HUD definitions. And most people that count serve and that follow HUD definitions, we don't count.
But I, and I think that, but the conversation that we have in our region and around the strategic plan is, it's still important to figure out, to have that count and to understand what that local need is so that on one hand, we're drawing down as many federal dollars as we can for those folks that meet that, meet that HUD definition of homelessness and use that as much as we can. And for the folks that don't meet that literal definition of homelessness, and for a large extent, it's families and youth and women. And that's where, you know, family promise, I'm channeling my inner Dana Ortiz, like these, a huge undercount there. But then I also wanted to say, you know, what I've observed in the short time that Kristin has been in her role, she's also engaging and challenging our partners to do more street outreach. That's challenging when there aren't as many resources available to actually house folks. So when you're engaging folks around street outreach, what's, what's the value add for them? If you don't want to, if you're not interested in staying in a congregate setting or you just don't, for whatever reason, we still need to count them. So I know Kristin has really worked to challenge our partners to get out to Camp New Beginnings, working with the homeless outreach teams and sometimes going out herself and doing the V.I. Spadats. Kristin goes to the jail to do assessments when they're needed for different partner agencies. She's incredibly responsive. So I think, but, but that's a two way street. We need to have more robust street outreach also to document those folks in multiple ways and in multiple settings.
One, one thing I would say, this gap was done with our internal data. There's so much more we can do, I have the money to pay someone to this and when they get, and the way, ways to do this without the government offers. And also, we need street outreach all over the state because that's a huge gap. And there's still, there are some, like $300, $300 for, from the state for state outreach. That's not enough. Find a couple of programs. So there's, there's more gaps besides what we're seeing you here today.
I'm just curious, are there unusual partners that we have not kind of put, put to work yet? I mean, I'm thinking we have, our nonprofits all work very hard and each have a piece of the puzzle. Are there, are there other partners that we have not engaged with yet that could be a part of this work that, especially for help, helping to identify folks that are, you know, falling through the gaps of who's being counted in our regular nonprofits?
So I can't think of anything off the top of my head. We will be starting our like pit processes soon of like counting and all of that. So we'll be creating a committee. Kristin will be working with all the providers to start preparing for that. So if she can think of anybody, we will bring them on. I do want to answer your question a little bit more regarding coordinated entry. So we have just recently, as of October 1st, changed our assessment. So we moved away from what was previously used, which was called the V.I. Spadat, and we have created our own. And so now we have different questions, different answers, different focuses, more points, more score, in order to really assess somebody and prioritize vulnerability and strengths. And so with that, three of the new questions is, where did you sleep last night? Where will you, will you sleep tonight? And where do you sleep most frequently? So for somebody who answers, well, I slept at my mom's house last night, that in the past would have stopped us from putting that in the past would have stopped us from putting them in coordinated entry, right? But the next two questions are extremely important because if they think tonight they're going to be in a shelter, they need to be assessed and added to coordinated entry. Or even if last night they were at their mom's house, tonight they're going to be at their friend's house, but most frequently they sleep unsheltered, then we definitely should assess them, right? Because the part of eligibility is at the time of program enrollment, not coordinated entry identification. So if we anticipate that they normally sleep outside or normally sleep in a shelter, but maybe it was cold tonight and they slept at their mom's house tonight, you know, that does not exclude them from being assessed. They should still be assessed. So I do think that with that change, we'll also get more people in coordinated entry.
I know that doesn't resolve the other end of the issue that we were just discussing a moment ago, which is, you know, literal housing for those people. But you just made my whole week, so thank you for sharing that update with me. I hadn't heard that.
Well, and she's been facilitating meetings for how many months? It's a collaborative effort with folks, just painstaking attention, making space for all the perspectives in the conversation. For how many months?
Practically all year.
Yeah, it's pretty, it's tremendous.
Jill, we have Kristin Egan on the line also. She's one of the partners that you also named.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Kristin, go ahead and introduce yourself.
Would you care to introduce yourself and weigh in?
Can you guys hear and see me? Oh, my gosh.
We got you, okay.
Cool, 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 okay. Just to that last question, and I'm so sorry, I can't really tell who's talking unless it's somebody I know and I recognize their voice. But there are, there are opportunities to get more agencies involved with, as access points, which is what we call an agency where somebody, if they show up and they are unhoused or precariously housed, that agency could add them to HMIS. And there's, there is room for growth in that area. I actually just, I was late to this because I was in a meeting with Heartland, who serves a huge number of unhoused people for their medical care. So I do think that that will improve over the next year.
I wanted to, Kristi, can you tell the group about the Built for Zero Community Solutions, MacArthur Grant opportunity that, that we're eligible for?
Yeah, I just applied for an agreement to, to, for a vendor, for HR's vendor, to create a report for us, for the entire balance state that would create a real-time data. How many people are flowing into homelessness? And who's existing homelessness? And also, the failure systems into homelessness. We, we, Douglas County has been the forefront of this movement. They apply for, to the 19 new, to become a Built for Zero Committee. We didn't have the data to help them, as we really become a Built for Zero Committee. We just went to a conference, Chris and I and some people from the COC went to a conference, and we, from there, we're going to pay, we're going to pay for this. We did a fight for this funding to become, to have the report done. So once it's done, we'll have a ability to create reports more than it's fast, where that, where time data.
Yeah, and having that real-time data dashboard is something that our community has said they've wanted from us.
Yes.
Achieving quality data has been a goal since we first became a Built for Zero community. And a lot of that, a lot of the Built for Zero principles and Community Solutions principles are inherent to everything that the COC does. So KSHC has embraced that work and are leading that work right now. And the MacArthur Grant is, it's guaranteed. It was offered to us because we've been a Built for Zero community as long as we have. And they recognize that our challenges on achieving quality data are not because we haven't wanted to. It's because of the technical, but just, just the barriers of lack of resources and capacity of being in a balance of state. And that's my opinion, but. So yeah, I wanted to just give this information, just provides a little more context to you all as we move into the next phases of the strategic plan. We have great partners in the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition and the COC. Douglas County is, and the city of Lawrence are heavily invested in all the work groups and the meetings. And I'm just really grateful to have them as partners.
So just a little bit of summary, and you can kind of chime in, make sure I'm on the right track. We have significant gaps in the services that are needed for our community over and above what's being offered already. But there is funding available that nobody is applying for that our nonprofits could be applying for. So that's the kind of conversation that we kind of need to keep all year. And September 29th, you said, was the deadline that passed. So, so like, so we need to keep that conversation, get people on target and ready to apply for that for next year. We're reducing barriers to, for, for access, additional access points to get people into the HMIS system. So that's important, that we can get more clarity and more data. We're beginning to ask the question on city of origin or county of origin, to kind of get some information about there that the community is really wanting. So I think we're on the track for getting better data. Data always wants, makes us want more data so we can ask better questions. So appreciate what you've brought us very much. Do we have other, either wrap-up thoughts or questions that we want to finish before we close up?
I'm going to say one more thing. HUD's going to release a second round of NOFO this year, this year, next year. I'm sorry. That is for purpose, purpose for housing and is for new construction. I have no idea if that includes rehab, but they, they want more, more new construction for purpose for housing. And you guys can apply, so please do.
We're anxiously awaiting that special NOFO, I think. I think, I don't think on that one we'll have any, any challenges getting some applications for that between tenants to homeowners and Housing Authority and Burt Nash. And permanent supportive housing projects were all we, were the only projects that we submitted for the Kansas Home ARC funds, the application that was submitted in time, and they've requested follow-up information from us. So fingers crossed, but it was all permanent supportive housing. So we can just push even more projects if they, if that NOFO is released and, yeah. But again, like, they're the ones that let us know that's coming. They help prepare us for it. They give us so much technical support. So we get, we get everything that I think, I feel like we need from our COC. Even though we are a balance of state, we really do get a lot out of our COC. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. I've been, I've been happy to serve as the treasurer of the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition for almost two years, I think. I'm going to transition out of that with our grant that we're getting from HUD so there's not a conflict of interest. But Brandon McGuire with the city of Lawrence has been serving on the, on the, on the Kansas Statewide Homeless Coalition Board. So in multiple ways, we're Douglas County, city of Lawrence, we're trying to be engaged partners in this, in this infrastructure.
Well, thank you very much for being here and for the work that you do for Douglas County and the rest of the 101 counties that you also serve. Unless there are any other further comments or questions, I think we are recessed until our 5:30 business meeting. Thank you.